I would like to call the Monday, February 24th, 2020, meeting of the Blue Springs Planning Commission to order. If I could ever ask everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone with us this evening, as well as those of you watching us from at home. I will run through tonight's agenda real quick. The first item is the consent agenda. Item two is a public hearing for the rezoning of Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms. Item three is a public hearing for the planned unit development concept plan for Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms. Item four is a preliminary plat for Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms. Item five is a site plan design review for a Chase ATM. And item six is a preliminary plat for Moreland Village Fifth Plat. Item seven, other business. Item eight is adjourned. I am going to start with item one on the agenda, which would be the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now what I was going to say, I'm going to bump items five and six ahead of items two, three, and four, just because items two, three, and four are going to be a little more lengthy. So we're going to start with item five, which is the site plan design review for the Chase ATM. And it's like Matt Wright's doing that for me this evening. Thought it was going to be Nathan.
All right, thank you Chairman Graham and Commissioners. Before this evening is a request for a site plan design review for Chase ATM at the southeast corner of Northwest Woods Chapel Road and Northwest Kings Ridge Drive. The subject property covers .19 acres and its own GB General Business, which does permit bank and financial institutions, including ATMs. The ATM is classified as a pad site and meets applicable coverage, height, and setback requirements per the UDC. Access to the site will be provided through a shared access easement from northwest Kings Ridge Drive. And we'll have a loop drive around the ATM, which can accommodate three stacking spaces. No pedestrian connections are required, however, any existing sidewalk along the frontages must be repaired and replaced if not ADA compliant. The purpose of the ATM coming before this planning commission, this could be reviewed administratively, however, they are requesting a reduction in the 15-foot buffer edge along the frontage of Kings Ridge. Normally, a 15-foot depth would be required, however, they are requesting to, due to the size of the lot, to encroach the access drive for the ATM into that buffer edge. The planning commission may approve a reduction when the required buffers cover more than 10% of the site. Again, given the size of the site and the fact that it is against two streets, 33.9% of the site is a required landscape buffer. With this reduction in the proposed, request reduction with the access drive, they would still have 30.8% of the site being a buffer, which is over three times the 10%. The landscape plan has also been provided and is short 16 plant units, which staff does recommend be provided on the final landscape plan for building permit. It is a, ATM design is largely metal and meets the design requirements of the UDC, and then signage will be reviewed administratively, provided that it meets the sign code. Staff doesn't recommend approval of the site plan design review, subject to three conditions in the staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wright? Does the applicant here, would you like to make a presentation?
Yeah.
I just need you to state your name and address, please.
Yeah, I'm Skip Hymer, I'm an architect. Our address is 2000 Shine Mission Parkway in Mission Woods, Kansas. I think the man has provided a presentation. So basically, we're just asking for approval of the infringement on the landscape buffer.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Fairbanks?
I was curious about lighting.
We are providing our own parking lot light.
Okay.
There's also, there's also security lighting under the canopy itself, and then a pole-mounted light as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Banks.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan design review for Chase ATM, the SPDR-01-20-7225, with the three staff conditions.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a second from Commissioner Cradoff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item will be the preliminary plat for Moreland Village Fifth Plat, and Mr. Wright is going to present that one as well.
Yep. Thank you Chairman Graham and Commissioners. Before this evening is a request for a preliminary plat for Moreland Village Fifth Plat, which is a proposed eight-lot single-family subdivision on 1.88 acres, which is located at both the southeast and southwest corners of the intersection of southeast Adams Drive and southeast Valley Forge Drive. The subject property is zoned SF7, single-family residential. This preliminary plat would complete the Moreland Village subdivision. The planning commission did approve a preliminary plat for Eagles Creek to the south on February 10th, which covers 58.64 acres. The preliminary plat includes a one-phase, single-family subdivision with access to six of the eight lots currently already installed along Valley Forge and Adams Drive. Lots 169 and 170 would require an extension to Adams Drive to be completed before those lots could be developed. All eight lots do meet the requirements of a detached house neighborhood lot in the SF7 zoning district. The minimum floor area classification for the lots is 1,400 square feet, which is one step above the first four plats of Moreland Village, which had a 1,200 square foot minimum. And the 1,400 square foot matches the Eagles Creek subdivision to the south. A street tree plan was also provided, which does meet all the street tree requirements. In addition to street trees on the lots, each lot must install 45 plant units prior to occupancy. The only sidewalk improvement required is along the west side of Adams Drive with the development of Lot 171. A stormwater management plan is required to be submitted to Public Works Review, and all public improvements, including the Adams Drive extension, are required to be completed prior to final plat approval. Staff did review the preliminary plat and finds that all UDC requirements and the review criteria for preliminary plat approval have been met, and therefore, staff does recommend approval with four conditions in the staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Wright? Commissioner Fairbanks?
I'm sorry. Is this a part of the NID sewer district?
I believe that this is on city sewer.
No, it's not part of the NID sewer district. There's some of this, some of these lots can be sewered, there's existing sewer too on northeast, our southeast Valley Forge Drive, and also on southeast Adams Drive. So this would not be in the NID.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Wright? All right, thank you. Is the applicant? I know you're here. Do you want to come up and say anything?
Who's going?
If you'll state your name and your address, please.
Hi, David Witt, 3917 Southwest Briarwood Oaks Drive. And we're just filling in Moreland Village, the last seven lots there. And like you said, we're above where the other units were at 1,400. And at that, it's going to be, you know, homes priced probably 250 to 350, surprising what 1,400 gets to these days. It's going to be really nice. And the sewer is, is there with, we'll be able to cut the street in three areas and hit that.
All right.
Any other questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Witt? Doesn't look like it. Thank you, sir.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Banks.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Moreland Village Fifth Plat, preliminary plat, PP-01-20-7224, with the four staff conditions.
I have a motion, I have a second.
A second.
Second from Commissioner Fairbanks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us back up to the top of the agenda with the public hearings. Before I open any of the public hearings, I'm just going to run through the procedures for it first. I will open the public hearing. I will call for exhibits from our city attorney. Staff will make the city's presentation. The applicant will give me, give them the opportunity to make their presentation. I will ask in witnesses, ask for witnesses in favor, then I'll ask for witnesses opposed. I will have a question and general discussion among the commissioners, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider the, for a vote. I would say if you're going to speak this evening at the public hearing, I'll need you to be recognized, and then when you've been called upon, come up to the podium. You'll need to be sworn in. The public stenographer, so you'll need to state your name and your address and be sworn in. I would ask that you refrain from repeating points that have already been made and stay on topic. If you are being represented by one speaker, we usually allow about 15 minutes for that speaker. If you're an individual getting up to speak, about five minutes. So with that, I am going to, and what I'll do, I'm going to open both public hearings. So we'll hear the public hearing on the rezoning. We'll be hearing the public hearing for the planned unit development, as well as the preliminary plat. We'll be hearing all three items at the same time, and then once public hearings close, we will, the commission will consider each item individually in the vote. So with that, I am going to open the public hearings for rezoning, RZ01-20-7212. The planned unit development, PUD concept plan, PUDC01-20-7211. I will ask for exhibits from the city attorney.
Yes, Chairman Graham, for RZ01-20-7212, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 25, 2020. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. Eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. Nine emails from Travis Kramer, developer, to Chief Large Prairie Township Fire Protection District, Jackie Maloney, Real Law LLC, Chief Bob Muntz, Blue Springs Police, Linda Ismert, Lee Summit School Board. Ten, exhibit 10, 22 emails in opposition, and then I'm adding exhibit number 11, which are, is one letter and four emails in opposition that were received after the publication of the agenda. And for public hearing, PUDC01-20-7211, I offer the following exhibits into the record. One, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 25, 2020. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. Eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. Nine emails from Travis Kramer, developer, to Chief Large Prairie Township Fire Protection District, Jackie Maloney, Real Law LLC, Chief Bob Muntz, Blue Springs Police, Linda Ismert, Lee Summit School Board. Exhibit 10, 22 emails in opposition, and exhibit 11 added tonight, one letter and four emails in opposition.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mallon.
Thank you. Chairman Graham and Planning Commissioners, Mike Mallon, Acting Director of Community Development on behalf of the city. I will make the initial presentation, and then have the applicant come up and make their presentation. The request is a quest to rezone for a PUD concept plan and a preliminary plat. The rezoning request is specifically to rezone a 29.20 acre portion of the overall 39.04 acre size of the property, in order to change the zoning from SF7 or Single Family Planned Unit Development Restricted Overlay, or S, Single Family PUDRO, as well as CB PUDRO, which is Central Business Planned Unit Development Restricted Overlay, and to change the zoning on those two properties to MF14, Multi-Family PUDRO. That, the rezoning request is again only for a portion of the property. That portion of the property is highlighted here in the black and white line. The remaining portion of the 39.04 acres lies over here, just to the west. That is currently zoned at SF7 PUDRO, and the applicant is not proposing to rezone that. The zoning map here shows what the existing zoning is on the site, as well as the surrounding This map represents the boundary of the entire PUD concept area. The PUD concept plan does encompass the entire 39.04 acres. Again, here you can see the extent of the PUD concept plan. The, again, here's another example, or another depiction of the proposed rezoning. On this graphic, Highway 7 is here to the north, so we're on the top of the map. North would be to the left. The applicant is again only proposing to rezone a portion of the property from SF7 PUDRO to, and CB PUDRO to MF14. The balance is again proposed to remain SF7 PUDRO. This is the proposed site plan for the project. The PUD concept plan and preliminary plat drawings are rolled into a single packet. Project proposes a 338-unit apartment complex, as well at, which includes garden-style and townhouse-style apartments, as well as a 17-lot, single-family detached home development along the western edge of the property. Those homes are proposed to have a minimum floor area of 1,800 square feet. The apartment complex portion of the project is what is proposed to be rezoned to multifamily MF14, and that encompasses Lot 1 and 2, which are both part of the apartment complex. The garden-style apartments are located on the northeast portion of the site, include three-story walk-up garden-style apartments. There's, there's 306 units in this area, and a pool and a clubhouse, as well as a dog play area, and multiple walking trails throughout. The second half of the apartment complex, staff is viewing it as all one apartment complex just being developed on two lots, includes eight fourplex unit buildings that are all to be developed on one lot, and, and meet the apartment complex building type standards. So we have two building types proposed for this PUD concept plan. We have the apartment complex building type, as well as the single-family home building type. The single-family homes are proposed to be developed as detached house neighborhood lot, which is typically found within the SF7 zoning district. The proposed development will have access from both Mason School Road here on the left side of the screen, or to the north, leading into the north part of the apartment complex. These access roads have been reviewed by our Public Works Department and have deemed to meet our, our standards. There are also four access points off of Brookside Drive, one into the north part of the apartment complex, and one into the south part, and then two accesses into the single-family portion of the development on the west side. Stormwater detention and stormwater quality have been met with this development. Sanitary sewer, the property is part of the Neighborhood Improvement District, or the NID, and the proposed number of sewer connections can be serviced by the existing NID sanitary sewers. Open space provided throughout the development with the apartment complex building type, the area zoned MF14 for the apartments, is required a minimum of 40% open space, of which 10% must be active open space. For the SF7, only 10% is required for that portion of the development. Overall, for the apartment complex, roughly 26.21 acres, 40% of that open space required would be about 10.49, or roughly 10 and a half acres. The applicant is proposing over 11.96 acres, which is in excess of that 40%. As far as the active open space, they are meeting that additional 10% being active through the areas encompassed by the clubhouse, the pool, the children's playground, the dog play area, some additional open space in between the buildings six, seven, or six through 10, buildings four and five, as well as the areas that incorporate the walking trails throughout the areas, that perimeter of the site. The SF7 portion is only, again, required 10% open space, they have, which is about .4 acres. They are providing in excess of 4.4 acres in total, and that includes the areas encompassed by Track C and Track E, and the active open space being provided through that is through the trail connections around the perimeter of that site. Tracks A and B are considered part of the open space for the multifamily, and that is where the bulk of the open space is. That is a natural stream buffer area that the developer is proposing to remain untouched as much as possible, and to preserve that area as a passive open space for the project. Parking for the apartment complex, for the garden-style apartments, based upon their use and their, the way the buildings are situated, are based upon the number of bedroom units. For a one-bedroom unit, 1.5 spaces is required. For the two-family units, or two-bedroom units, there's 336 spaces required. And for the clubhouse, 27 spaces, for a total of approximately 470 spaces. The site plan for the garden-style apartment complex portion proposes 472 spaces. Carports are proposed for 112 of those spaces. Parking for the townhouse apartment complex is based upon the style of those units, and is two per unit, and those will be provided through two-car garages and driveway, or one-car garage, pardon me, as well as a space leading up to that garage in the driveway. So parking for this portion has been met, and also for the single-family homes, two units, or two parking spaces per unit, and those can be provided through garage spaces, as well as driveways leading up to those garages. The PUD concept plan does propose some minor modifications to the underlying zoning district regulations, and the PUD concept plan is a means by which to allow some flexibility in the development standards. And so as part of that, the applicant has requested that, and those need to be approved as part of the PUD concept plan. Specifically, those are to reduce the front setback of 50 feet along the front for a collector road or higher intensity, which would be reducing the front setback along Mason School Road. It's approximately 39 to 40 feet. That's approximate at this point. Final building design won't be brought forward until later. Staff believes that that justification, or that modification is justified, as allows all of the buildings to be moved up towards the street, which in staff's opinion fosters a better urban design. By having buildings located closer to the street, it reduces the amount of parking that's located up against a street. And so the buildings actually help share, or you know, buffer the part, view of parking from the adjacent roadways. It also allows the buildings to be moved further away from the existing single-family homes to the west and the estates at Chapman Farms. The second modification is for the single-family homes, specifically to the detached house neighborhood lot, to allow lot sizes that are in excess of the maximum allowed of 12,000 square feet. Specifically, those are for lots 17, 18, and 19. Those three lots here on the southwest end cul-de-sac are over the 12,000 square feet. Staff believes that is a justified modification, as that is in excess of the city code requirements. The other final PD modification is to allow for a smaller minimum lot width for the detached houses along the cul-de-sac, specifically lots four and five here. Staff runs into this fairly frequent, frequently on cul-de-sac lots, and it's difficult to meet that front setback due to the shape of the lot, kind of fanning out from the street facing and to the back. And so that is a very common PD request, or PUD request that staff has, and staff generally supports that, because we know that it's difficult to fit lots on the ends of those The PD concept plan staff believes overall are justified and helps create a higher quality development while creating more space and ability for the apartment complex buildings in the northeast corner to be moved closer to the arterial and collector streets. The architectural character of the buildings, the proposed apartment complex garden-style buildings are of high quality and meet the residential design standards outlined in the Unified Development Code, include a mix of materials, including siding, brick, asphalt shingles, include a number of roof breaks along, and the roof plane variation, as well as building projections, as well as, and recesses to help break up the box-like effect of those buildings. Again, the proposed architecture for the apartment complex garden-style units, they have a 24-unit building and then an 18-unit building, all of which utilize the same design materials and design elements. The proposed, this is the rendering of the proposed clubhouse, which again utilizes the similar materials, a mix of brick, stone, asphalt shingles, and siding, for, to create a, a high-quality design utilizing a variety of materials, as well as to break up the box-like effect with roof plane variations. The proposed townhouse-style apartments also utilize similar materials with brick, mixture of brick, horizontal siding, and shake siding. Variation is provided with, through recesses, as well as through architectural detailing, such as the shutters on the windows and the wood trellis features, or the trellis features that cover the garages. Again, each unit would have its own one-car garage, and then a parking space leading up to that garage. The elevations for that. The single-family home architecture is conceptual at this point, but this is illustrative of the quality that they are proposing. The single-family house design are of high quality, in staff's opinion, utilize a mix of front and side loaded garages, mainly ranch-style homes. I believe many will have the ability to be walkout or daylight basements due to the topography of those sites. The proposed, proposed facades utilize a variety of materials, including masonry, brick, and stone, as well as cementitious siding and asphalt shingles. The final design for the architecture for all of the buildings would be done through a PD final, or PUD final plan, once those design elements are further articulated and developed. But these drawings here represent the level of quality that the developer would be held to in terms of those, that design. The preliminary plat application, as I said, is rolled in with the PUD concept plan, plan The proposed development, or preliminary plat meets the minimum standards in the UDC Section 403500, or 050, excuse me, for preliminary plats. The phasing, the first phase of the project is proposed to be the, the garden-style apartments. The second phase would be the townhouse-style apartments, and the third phase would be the single-family lots. The developer will have to provide drafts of proposed HOA restrictions and establish an HOA for the single-family home portion of the project. Typically, apartment complexes have their own management company that maintains all of the grounds on those, and so typically, we don't get HOA restrictions for those. That is the general staff presentation of the project. I'm sure the applicant will give more. At this time, I'd like to go through the development, or the UDC review criteria, staff's response to the UDC criteria, and then provide staff's recommendation for all three applications. Please bear with me, this may get a little long, but I want to make sure that we address each of the criteria for each of the applications. In reviewing an application for an amendment to the official zoning map, Planning Commission staff and City Council shall review the proposed amendment, considering the comprehensive plan, the general requirements of the Unified Development Code, and then the following nine criteria. The first criteria is that the application is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and any official plan or program developed under the guidance of the comprehensive plan. This portion of the city falls within the S1 area plan, or the specific plan area for the site. the site, so the comprehensive plan is a little bit more broad in nature, and then specific plans, or area plans have been developed for sections of the city. As you may know, we just completed the S2 area plan back in 2018. The S1 area plan was developed in concert with the comprehensive plan and drills down into the land uses a little bit more than the general nature of the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that the rezonings are in accordance with the 2014 comprehensive plan, specifically the S1 area plan, as it, the plans encourage adding higher-density residential along corridors to support commercial and service uses along those corridors, as well as to help provide a buffer from arterial streets to single-family homes. Further, the single-family portion provides a transition between the medium-density residential and the single-family homes to the west. The proposed MF14 zoning and the SF7 zoning for the development will allow a mix of residential units, including apartments, both garden-style and townhome, as well as single-family home, to be developed in a coordinated master planned development that meets the intent of the comprehensive plan designations on the property, which are high-density residential for the northwest general corner of the site, and the balance of the property is, under the comprehensive plan and S1 area plan, is designed as mixed-density residential. So staff believes that this proposal falls within the intent of those two plans, and therefore, staff feels that this rezoning request meets that criteria. The second criteria is that the application's further in the intent of the proposed zoning district and supports that of any abutting zoning districts. Staff believes that the base MF14 and SF7 districts are not being substantially modified from the Unified Development Code as part of this rezoning request, except for those modifications specifically requested as part of the PUDC concept plan. The proposed transition from medium-density multifamily residential to single-family allows the intensity of development to scale down from the 7-Highway corridor to single-family homes on the west, and also provides a buffer from that major arterial street, the highway to the existing homes to the west. The third is that the precedence that might result from approval or denial of the application and the possible effects of such precedence on the character of the area, and in particular, the building form, site design, and other development patterns that accompany for the proposed zoning district. Staff believes a request to rezone from the existing commercially-zoned and single-family residentially-zoned designations will allow residential land uses to continue to be located on the west side of 7-Highway in this area, given the surrounding land uses and the appropriateness of the proposed land units within the vicinity of not only existing but proposed development. This proposed rezoning will allow a mix of housing types in proximity to a major arterial corridor, which furthers a transition in intensity of land uses, and the addition of more residential units in this portion of the city, specifically along this portion of the 7-Highway corridor, will help support the development of adjacent commercially-zoned properties in the area, not only located right next door, but also across the street, across 7-Highway to the east. The fourth is compliance of any proposed developments for the requirements of the UDC. Staff believes that this property will be able to comply with all the requirements of the UDC as shown in the plans and comply with the proposed modifications as requested as part of the PUDC concept plan. The fifth is that the ability of the city and other governmental agencies to provide services, facilities, or programs that would be required if the application were approved. Staff does believe that this rezoning will not reduce the ability of the city or other governmental agencies to provide services, facilities, or programs. Staff has been informed that all applicable services, including water, sewer, roadway infrastructure, are able to be served by this development and by the city. The city has heard from the Fire Protection District that they are also able to provide fire services to this area, as evidenced by the email from the Prairie Township Fire Chief. In addition, police service has also been, staff has been informed that police service will be able to be provided in this portion of the city as well, and school capacity are within the capabilities of the existing school providers, and I believe the applicant can discuss more their conversations that they have had with the school district to answer any questions about that. The sixth criteria is that the effect of approval and the condition or value of property in the city or in the vicinity, including the likelihood of surrounding areas to be developed in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that approval of this rezoning will not negatively impact the property values of properties within this city, within the city, but also specifically within the vicinity, as the criteria says. Development investments on vacant land generally have a positive impact on surrounding land use or values versus that of vacant land. Staff also is aware that there is some opposition from neighbors claiming that this will reduce their property values, or staff, that is a subjective opinion that will be offered. Staff does not have any definitive studies that says placing multifamily or medium-density housing next to single-family housing will have a negative impact, and we could, staff has also, you know, been informed through other studies that it doesn't have any impact. And so without that ability to discern between those two, staff cannot make a determination as to whether or not it'll have a significant decrease or increase in property values for specifically the single-family homes to the west. But when staff looks at property values, we not only look at just the property values in the immediate area, but we also look at the surrounding area and this overall portion of the city, and staff does believe that this development, like I said, will have a positive impact on some property values, especially those that are commercially-zoned within the area, as this additional residential units will drive, help drive the demand for retail in the southern portion part of the city and make those lands that are zoned commercially, property values will likely increase. So staff does feel that that criteria has been met, and in addition, staff does not believe that the proposed rezoning will prevent any of the surrounding properties or properties within the vicinity from being developed in accordance with the comprehensive plan, both the mixed-density portion that falls to the west of this subdivision, but also the commercially-zoned portions that are across the highway, 7-Highway on the east. The seventh criteria is that the requested change in zoning is justified by a change in conditions since the existing zoning was designated. The requested zoning, in staff's opinion, is justified as there have been a number of changes in conditions since the zoning was put in place. The exist, or the original PUD concept plan and zoning for the site was established in 2004, and a number of things have happened in terms of market conditions over the last 15 or 16 years, including the collapsed housing market, and the overall Chapman Farms PUD plan has been modified in a number of different ways over the years that have actually led to more single-family homes and more duplexes being built throughout the project and less higher-density retail or development. As such, and over time, the retail areas on the east side of 7-Highway were originally proposed to be developed with a Walmart and a Lowe's market to take up those large retail areas. Both of those users have since canceled plans to develop on those sites. Staff views that as a definite change in the market, and staff believes that there is an overabundance of commercially-zoned property within this immediate area, and as such, the change from this property for the commercial portion and SF7 to multifamily is appropriate to help not only provide a diversity of housing options for residents in southern portion of Blue Springs, but also to help support future commercial development and services in this portion of the city. The eighth criteria is that the consistency of the application with other adopted policies of the city. Staff believes that this proposal is consistent with other adopted city policies, and the final one is the recommendations of city staff on the rezoning request. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning to MF14 PUD RO for the portion of the site that is proposed, will allow the property to be developed as a coordinated, moderate-density multifamily development for that portion with two different styles of apartment units, as was contemplated by the high-density designation in the S1 area plan. The proposed zoning allows for a variety of housing types that are needed in the city for now and in the future, and will help support existing commercial development in the future. The currently-zoned SF7 portion on the west side that will contain the single-family homes is not proposed to be redeveloped or rezoned at this time, and therefore is not part of the rezoning request. I just want to make that clear. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning application as staff finds that it meets the criteria listed in the UDC. For the review of the PUD concept plan, the review criteria, there are five of those, and I'll run through those briefly now. A PUD concept plan shall be reviewed according to the following criteria, the first being that the plan represents an improvement over what could have been accomplished through strict application of otherwise applicable base zoning district standards, based upon the goals of the comprehensive plan, and based upon generally accepted planning and design principles. Staff believes that the plan does represent an improvement over traditional UDC development as it allows three separate phases of development to be coordinated through similar design elements, architectural character, and other unifying elements to tie the entire project together, as well as requiring a high quality of design that will complement the adjacent residential neighborhood developments. The second criteria is that the benefits of any flexibility in the standards proposed in the plan promote the general public health, safety, and welfare, and in particular, the areas immediately nearer within the proposed project. Staff believes that the flexibility being requested in the development standards to move the buildings closer to Mason School Road in the northeast corner, as well as reduce the lot frontage on the cul-de-sac lots, on lots four and five, and allowing a maximum lot size greater than 12,000 square feet, would not have any negative impact on the general public health, safety, and welfare, and will help lead to a higher-quality development that actually helps produce a better urban design along the street front, the perimeter street frontages, and allows exceptions to the code that are actually in excess of the code. So staff believes that those, that criteria is met. In addition, the mix of housing types provides needed housing options for residents in this part of the city, and the location of this will allow residents of this project, if it were to be approved, access to major arterial streets and highways, and in future commercial development and city services, or retail services and other services to be provided for those residents. The third criteria is that the benefits of any flexibility in the standards meet or exceed the intent statements of the base zoning district. As mentioned, the plan is modifying only a small number of requirements under the UDC, and staff does believe that those modifications are warranted and justified and benefit the overall project. The PUDC, or PUD concept plan will govern the development of this site, as shown on the plans. Any significant changes proposed to the PUD concept plan would have to go back through the Planning Commission and City Council process. So the PUD concept plan does lay out the general development patterns for the site, but is also the regulatory document that helps guide the development of the site and sets the development regulations for the property. So this plan would control over the development of the site. So staff believes that that criteria is met. The fourth criteria is that the plan generally reflects, reflects, accepted, sound planning and urban design principles with respect to applying the comprehensive plan and any specific plans to the area. As mentioned, the S1 area plan has this property located, or identified as high-density residential and mixed-density residential. Staff believes that this project is in conformance with that. Concentrating the apartments into the east side of the site allows those units to not be only offset from the existing single-family homes, a distance of over 600 feet, but also allows the apartment buildings themselves to serve as a visual and physical buffer to the noise and traffic from South 7-Highway. The additional step-down in development scale from the apartments to the townhouse-style apartments and subsequently, or eventually, the single-family home units here along the west further transitions the scale of development. Staff believes that the existing commercially-zoned portions of the property are in similar intensity to that of a multi, or medium-density multifamily apartment complex project, and therefore is similar in intensity of land use, and therefore is also appropriate. The fifth criteria is that the plan meets all the review criteria for zoning map amendment, and as noted above, staff believes that the request meets the criteria for a rezoning request. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the PUD concept plan with seven conditions. The preliminary plat, staff reviewed the preliminary plat in accordance with the standards of Chapter 406 and other applicable Unified Development Code criteria. Staff believes that it meets each of those criteria, as outlined in the city code for a preliminary plat, and therefore, staff does recommend approval of those, and those, that recommendation comes with 14 conditions for the preliminary plat. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any question before we have the applicant come forward. Commissioner Phillips, do you have a question?
I have a quick question. You keep, this is a definition, you keep referring to this as garden apartments. What is a garden apartment versus a regular apartment? What's the distinction there? You seem to be making that on a regular basis.
Well, it's trying to draw a distinction between the, you know, the three-story walk, you know, walk-up style of garden apartments. Garden style is a kind of an industry term that represents, you know, a three-story apartment where you walk up to a corridor, stairs, and then it leads to individual units on the inside, so that's kind of a garden-style walk-up apartment.
Commissioner Banks?
I have a question, Mr. Mallon.
Sure.
You talked about the study that you did, or that there was a study done on apartments versus single-family. Did it reference the community that those studies were done?
No, staff, I meant that in general, that there are certain studies out there, one produced by the Urban Land Institute, another by the, I think, the Kennedy School of Government or something like that, that basically draw no conclusion as to whether or not apartments have a negative or positive impact on adjacent development. I was referencing that because some homeowners will say that this has a definite negative impact on their property, and I was just trying to point out that there's two sides to the story, and that there's really no way to definitively measure that quantitatively or empirically without the property being appraised based upon the project that's approved or built.
I just wanted to know what references you referred to as I had referred to.
Okay. Commissioner Fairbanks?
On the single-family residential portion of this, is that duplexes or actual single-family homes?
These are single-family detached homes. The original proposal that was withdrawn earlier by the applicant did originally have those as two-family homes. These are proposed as single-family detached neighborhood lot homes.
And they will be for sale and not for rent?
I do not know. The city does not have any regulations regarding for rent or for-sale properties.
Thank you.
I do have one more.
Yes, Commissioner Banks?
You were talking about these townhomes and how they're going to sit back or sit closer to the street or whatever.
I meant the apartments, typically.
Well, what about the townhomes? Because...
The townhome-style apartments will meet all of the building setbacks required of an apartment complex.
Okay, well, I'm concerned about if, how far, if they're going to have one-car garage?
One-car garage per unit, yes.
And two parking places on the driveway, right?
And one additional parking space in the driveway, so there'll be, yeah, per, each unit will have a one-car garage and then a parking space right behind it, leading.
And the driveway will be long enough, it will not cross the sidewalk, is that correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, no, staff will make sure that the front building setbacks are measured from the building to the property line, which is the back of the right-of-way line, and city sidewalks are located within the right-of-way, so therefore, by just meeting the required 20-foot building setback, they would automatically meet the minimum parking space size.
Because we can't keep people from, that own their own home from doing that, so I don't know, I just wanted to make sure.
That is, that is a use error by residents. I would say that as long as staff make sure that houses meet the minimum front setbacks, and those front setbacks can accommodate a car in the driveway, then that's what the developer has to meet.
Okay. All right. Yes, Commissioner Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mallon, about these townhomes, I was just wondering, I was curious, we're deciding to rezone that area as MF14 as well today?
Yes.
Is that correct? Is that typical, or is there any kind of precedent for that, or would there generally be a different classification for these two-family townhomes?
Well, because all of the townhome buildings are going to be located on one lot, it meets the definition of the apartment complex building type, and so the developer has chosen to rezone all of it to MF14, which would, which allows the apartment complex building type.
But in theory, since this is a part of Phase 1, they could potentially change that in the future to be a full apartment complex then?
Oh, the...
Oh, the southern portion?
The townhomes, could they replace the townhomes?
Only if they came back through the planning commission and the city council to change the building type on there. That's what I was trying to emphasize, is that this PUD concept plan governs the development of the site and the building layout, and, you know, unless there's, you know, it allows for some minor modifications for, you know, a little bit of landscaping here, nothing significant enough like you described. Anything significant like that would have to come back through the process as a PUD concept plan amendment and go through the planning commission and city council approval process.
Thank you. My other question is in regards to, I guess this would be the western part, or just to the west of the apartment complex, where it says tract two and tract one. Is there any kind of buffer there between, and where the stormwater area is as well? Is there any kind of buffer between these homes kind of on the bottom of the screen and the apartment complex?
There is a lot of existing vegetation in that area, and the open space itself provides a buffer. I don't think, we haven't developed the final, they have not developed the final landscape plan and brought it to the city to review in terms of specific types of trees or anything that's proposed for landscaping along the west side of the apartment complex building. So the code does require adequate landscaping and buffering to help, you know, visually separate the two types of land uses. So we would finalize that as part of the PD final plan and PD final landscape plan.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mallon? All right, thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to make their presentation, if you could be sworn in?
Jaclyn Maloney, 301 Southeast Douglas, Suite 201, Lee Summit, Missouri. Six, okay, great.
I would just ask, when you're speaking, speak into the microphone, please. You don't have to lean forward, but just if you're facing the microphone.
Is this okay?
Yeah, you don't have to be that close.
Great. Good evening, my name is Jackie Maloney. I am counsel, legal counsel for the developer. The developer is Travis Kramer with Kramer Real Estate. We've got our architect here, Tom Nolte. We also have our engineer here, Dan McGee, and we also have our construction manager here, Tom Whitehead. One of the Toms is going to, is going to get up and walk through the site design, have a quick little presentation with the architect and the engineer, and then I've got just a couple of points to make when they're finished.
All right.
Thank you.
And you'll need to be sworn in as well.
Yes, I do. I'm Thomas Nolte, Nolte and Associate Architects and Planners, 9400 Reed's Road, Overland Park, Kansas. Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman, staff. I think the plan you got up, Mike, is the one I want to talk about right now. I'm just, as architect and land planner, going to take you on a little walk around the site. Mike was very thorough, kind of stole a lot of my thunder, but I'll see if I can find some additional items that we can talk about. Always keeping Missouri Highway 7 at the top of the page, north would be on the left-hand side. We've got the 13 apartment buildings along with the clubhouse, a pool. We've got some interesting things built into this, you know, which is the newer amenities that we often find in apartments. We have a storm sanctuary area on the bottom level of the clubhouse, fully enclosed, all concrete, multiple entries and exits. Of course, the pool, we have children's playground area. We also have a dog, what we call the dog park. Then we keep the trash separate from the main area, and what's common now is we're starting to see things such as recycling, because so many apartments in the past have not had the chance to do that, and so we offer that to the residents also. Of course, there's walking trails and outside activities that we have proposed, areas also that are in between the apartments. Mike also had mentioned that some of the parking will be covered. Of course, with the townhomes, we do have architecturally incorporated garages. We find these particularly valuable and is a good mix. We often have what we would say is families that have children in the car, and if you're trying to carry in groceries, do you take the groceries in and they come back and get the children, or do you take the children in and come back and get the groceries? But if you can put the car in the garage, you can do both. So we find this is a particularly interesting feature for a lot of these apartments to have is an enclosed garage. Our single-family houses to the south, we're looking at a 39-acre site, 10 acres are being used on this westerly side for single-family. We've only loaded one side of the street. You know, instead of trying to cram too many in there, these are kind of long piano-key lots, they have the square footage, but we also have landscaping on both sides of the street. We have the front of the houses facing west, so we think that's interesting, that we would develop in that style. We could have pressed it harder but chose not to. Of course, we did have a neighborhood meeting, there were lots of comments. We were trying to pay attention to the comments that were discussed, and as we modified our site plan, we've been working on this since October, November, with our first meetings with the city. Mr. Mallon has shepherded this project through with a lot of detail. As you can see in the report, a lot of items were discussed. What I feel most particularly pleased about, though, when I look at a report like this, is this is a clean application. I think we have two small modifications, one for the, well, two of them relate to the single-family, one of them relate to setbacks, and I think both of them, all three of these are very positive. One's in excess, and two are considerations. But, you know, this is, this is the value that you get when you have a PUD. And a PUD, Planned Unit Development, they're relatively rare, they're usually on large projects, and, but it becomes, and I say this in a roundabout way, they're like custom zoning. You have the flexibility of street widths, of setbacks, of all sorts of building materials and things, but we pretty much stayed true to the code, and so I feel like we have a clean application with minor deficiencies that, and as I said, two of them are pretty small requests, and one of them's in excess. A PUD also requires the applicant to do a lot more work, a lot more drawings. We have probably, I think, over 18 documents just in the document side of the drawings, and then, of course, you can see the review process is extensive also. And what we're most proud of is that not only do we have three applications in front of you this evening, but we also have three recommendations for approval, extensively reviewed. So this didn't happen by mistake, this happened with a lot of meetings, a lot of correspondence, back and forth, and so we feel very strong about that. And we feel like we have a good plan. I think the crux of the deal is this, and you can argue it either way, the comprehensive plan, though, is a very strong planning tool, and this comprehensive plan specifically outlined the expectations, and I think this plan delivers on those expectations. And I'd be here to answer any questions, if you have them, as we proceed through these hearings.
All right, any questions for Mr. Nolte? Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner.
I do have one. You said there is kind of a storm safety area underneath the clubhouse. Is that only for the apartment people, or will the townhomes be able to use that as well?
Yes, the townhomes will be available, and we've also designed it even for the single-family, so it's more than large enough. Our clubhouse is over 8,000 square feet, and when we take FEMA rules, we have a certain amount of square footage dedicated to people that are seeking safety, and we also have some amenities that go along with that, such as entry, exits, waiting areas, restrooms, things like that. So we're, that's how we're planning on doing that. And so this is relatively new, you're going to start seeing that fairly often in multifamily, but you're also probably going to see it, especially with senior housing, it's required.
I have a question.
Commissioner Banks?
I noticed on the plan with the buildings, there are, let's see, let me see if I can say, see which number they are, I had printed out myself. Building one at the very top left, and then again over on the far right at the top. There is no access to the back of those buildings, and as far as like the bottom, I guess the fire department has reviewed your plan for...
Yes, and the good news...
Because I mean, you can access it from the street on that one, but...
Well, we have Missouri 7, and they can access it, and then from the parking lots, of course, and then also from the Mason School Road, so...
But the one, that building 13, right there, I guess as far as the back of it, you couldn't, you'd have to go in through the front if there was a...
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Casey?
Could you talk a little bit about your phases of development here, what your timetable is for developing these three different areas?
I can attempt to, it'd probably be better to hear from our developer, but let me give it a shot, and you shake your head if I get out of bounds, Travis. First phase is the apartments, the second phase is the townhomes, and there was an earlier question that came up about the single-family, those are for sale, those are not rental properties. The apartment properties and the townhomes are rented, and those are where we get our designation, our MF, which is multifamily, 14, can't exceed 14. Our number right now is 12.2, I believe, is our ratio, which is a pretty strong ratio. We feel that that's good, we have a lot of good open area and a lot of amenities.
Any other questions? Commissioner Fairbanks?
Is it conceivable that you could change that phasing and maybe do the single-family homes first, and then maybe the townhouses?
Well, since...
The last.
Okay. The single-families will be for sale, so each one of, you know, those lots would be for sale, so it depends on when they put the road and utilities in, that's going to drive that. It could change. We're, we're going to be back in front of you for final plan approval as we move down the road here a little bit. I think the main idea, though, is tonight is to get the preliminary plan, which is a, you know, this is kind of interesting, a PUD amendment, I guess would probably be the formal way to say it, is we're amending the PUD and development plan, and that gives us our preliminary, and that plan supports the request for the rezoning. And then, of course, kind of tying the whole thing up at the end there is the plat, because we have 39 acres with three different distinct uses, you know, and also, this is kind of a unique piece of property. And when we first started, I was, it was a real hedge-scratcher here. We've got this drainage, 100-foot-wide easement, and there's some other things that go inside that easement too, such as sewers and water and utilities. So this is kind of a, an interesting corridor that gets cut through this site. It kind of lobes it into four pieces. So we're on both sides of Brookside, north and south, and then we're two sides of the easement. So it's an interesting piece of property to develop, and it's lent itself to these two uses that we have.
Yes, Commissioner Casey?
I kind of just want to back up what Commissioner Fairbanks was saying. I think we've received a lot of communications from people in the public that are concerned with the possibility that maybe only the apartments get completed, and so I think she was just kind of voicing that concern on behalf of the people that are, that are here and are concerned about this development. They definitely want to see if this goes forward, those single-family homes. So I, I just, I wanted to, we had this opportunity to talk with you directly, so we just kind of want to convey that there's a concern there.
I agree with you too, and maybe we can get the developer up here in a little bit, and he'll tell you his plans, and you can hear it from, from him.
Sounds good.
I have one.
For Mr. Nolte?
I'm not sure who I need to ask, so you can direct me. Did you put the plan together as far as where the buildings and everything go, and what...
Well, it was, you know, a lot of...
I don't know who all works together here.
Well, this is like the ninth plan. The first few were trying to do studies on the site, what's its capacity, where are the restrictions, where's the opportunities? And then, early on, we had an application that was withdrawn, we were supposed to be here in December. We had duplexes on the west property line, and those were removed to basically keep the existing zoning that's there right now, that 10 acres, which is the S7. And so that changed, the arrangement of the apartments changed, the decision about the townhomes, that changed. We had two or three meetings with staff, they pointed out some very no-negotiation issues to us. In other words, MF14 is important, and make sure that you bring in all your calculations, and you're able to prove up everything you're drawing. And so we started from that location, and that determined our density, that determined our arrangement. They'd like to see more, a clubhouse and amenities, please tell us about them. And so those all became part of our presentation. And thank you for reminding me, because there's one other thing that was included in the packet for you this evening, and this are the Earnhardt Estates Design Standards. This is about 20 pages of everything from colors, materials, signage, landscaping, everything that we've put into our other developments, that are quality developments. We think it's best not just to say it, print it, show it. We want this, and this is another reason a PUD has so much power at the planning level, is because it's, if it's on the plan, that's what we're going to do. Where there's a little bit more flexible in open zoning, PUD is custom zoning, and therefore it takes a lot more drawings to quantify everything, a lot more written material, a lot more responses, and so that's what we, we've done.
Can I, can I ask, would you make, what standards, what did you say about what...
Yeah, these are in your packet. This is a 20-page document, it's called the Design Standards, it's at the end.
Okay.
It's not real exciting, but it's still an important part, I believe, of a quality development, in which we show all of the materials, as I said, signage, and we go into great detail about explaining that. And now that is one of the items that becomes a registered document of the PUD.
Okay, could I ask you, when did you develop these Design Standards, when you decided to bring this plan here?
Well, in our first meeting with staff, we showed them that we had some examples, we went through those, and they said, well, we'd like to see those.
The reason I'm asking is I want to know if you have other developments with this group with these standards somewhere in the city?
Yes, we do. In fact, we have them kind of in Oklahoma City, we also have them in Topeka, we have these, latest ones are in Overland Park, and we also have one in Lenexa. So we modify them, you'll notice that this is for this particular site, these are not stand, these are not just plug-and-play, we made them specific for this site.
And are they still called the same name, Earhart?
Earhart Estates is the name of our development.
Is, like, they are in Oklahoma, Topeka?
No, no, the ones in Oklahoma have, you know, they're Quail Ridge, those were all different.
So they're all different, so there's not another name with this name?
No, this is it.
This is the one.
This is the one and only.
So if you want to go find Earhart Estates, there won't be any other ones?
That is correct. This is custom zoning.
Any other questions? Commissioner Phillips?
I probably should be waiting.
I probably should be waiting, but can you, since you're the architect, discuss briefly why you decided the mix of one- and two-bedroom apartments, and why you chose one- and two-bedroom apartments and not, say, a three-bedroom or, you know, something else along?
Certainly. We have plans for all kinds of apartments. We did discuss three bedrooms with the developer. They did a market study, and the market that they're going for is not a three-bedroom market. They wanted to have two bedrooms and one bedroom. So, we modified our buildings accordingly and adjusted them for these, for these numbers. And if they want three-bedroom, our townhomes will allow for that, because there are three bedrooms there, plus a garage.
I just, I'm not used to seeing quite so many one-bedroom apartments in something like this.
Okay. Commissioner Fairbanks?
I'm curious about the creek that goes through, because Mr. Mallon said that they were going to do virtually nothing with the creek. And when I drove down there, the creek is all overgrown and pretty ugly. So, I'm wondering, are you gonna leave it pretty ugly, or are you going to do something to enhance the creek?
All right. If you don't mind, I'd like to step away and let our engineer talk about that.
Sure. He'll need, you'll need to be sworn in, state your name, the whole...
Do you some sort of testimony about this case? Could you do some...
I do. Dan McGee, Lamprey Neerson, 9001 State Line Road, Suite 200, Kansas City, Missouri. The drainage that bisects this property is, actually, it's an APWA stream buffer, is what it is. So, the intent of that is to leave it natural and not provide development in there. So, there's actually, a stream buffer continues up, it's based on the amount of drainage area that comes to it. So, this particular site's receiving quite a bit of runoff from the northwest that comes from the estates of Chapman Farms and further up to northwest. So, no, the, the plan would be to keep it natural, for the most part. That's, we have some minor stormwater enhancements, so the existing stormwater management basin out there would be enlarged to be able to provide stormwater best management practices for the water quality, and also the detention, to basically bring the site back to what's assumed for the downstream detention basin, which is single-family residential. So, we would keep the site in conformance with that.
Commissioner Banks?
I'm sorry?
No, you're fine.
There are several berms out there. Are you gonna, because it keeps it from where you can't see as easily, like the apartments or from the neighbors. Are you gonna leave those berms in there, or what?
I think we'd have to evaluate it as a team and decide if we would propose any kind of modifications in that area, and work with Public Works and city staff to make sure that we're, we're not impeding on the function of the stormwater management and the drainage for that area. But all site grading would be included, obviously, in final design, when we get to that point, to show any kind of improvements within the site and within any, any buffer areas. Some utilities have to cross through the buffer areas or the stormwater easement, if you will, for like sanitary sewer, for instance. There's quite a bit of sanitary sewer that's already crossed through there from the estates of Chapman Farms.
Okay. Thank you. So...
So, the maintenance on that area would be the responsibility of who?
That's part of the track, so that'd be part of the apartment complex, would, would, essentially create covenants and restrictions that would maintain that area?
The reason I'm asking all of these questions is because the development I am in right now, there is an issue with stormwater drainage. And we have another across-the-street business that is actually contaminating the stormwater drainage area that is exiting on our property. And it's always gonna be a situation of, okay, is the party responsible for generating the issue, be responsible for it financially, or does the party that receives the water be responsible for it? So, that's why I'm concerned about the water. And it's very close, that stream is very close to the single families, even though they might have walkout basements.
I just did want to note that the actual buffer easement that we're showing here is actually two-hundred feet wide. It's even wider than what's actually upstream, so we have a lot of width there. There is a couple hundred acres of drainage that's coming through there, so we would control the outfalls from our proposed project to make sure that's going through, not only for the detention, but also the BMPs or water quality through mark criteria. So, that would help collect anything that's coming from this particular site. Obviously, we can't control what's coming from upsite, upstream of this development, but we'd also want to, you know, make sure that the infrastructure isn't getting clogged on Brookside Drive, for instance. There's some culverts there, so that'd be a spot to coordinate maintenance and look, you know, work with the city on that as well, if it's public infrastructure that's, that's being impacted by upstream development.
Okay. So, the insurance industry would not require that you fence that area?
I do not believe so.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one more.
Commissioner Banks?
Do you know if that's in a floodplain?
No, it is not, not in a FEMA floodplain.
And you've...
Yeah, we've reviewed FEMA mapping for that. It's not in a FEMA floodplain.
Any other questions for Mr. McGee? Yes, Commissioner Crandall?
Are there any agreements that you've entered into for the maintenance of the rental property?
I would have to...
I'll speak to it.
We'll have to have the developer answer that question. Can you do it now?
Well, let's wait and see, or hold and vote. If anybody has any more questions for Mr. McGee first? No? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do you some sort of testimony about this case? Could you do some...
I do. Travis Kramer, 3909 West 124th Street. Commissioner Casey, to answer your question, the, all the utilities and the underground development would be conducted first. It would all be three concurrent phases, so they would all go on at one time. The single-family lots would either be built to suit, built to spec, or we will sell lots. So, although it will be developed and ready to build, the single-family homes might not be built immediately, but they will be ready.
Thank you.
Commissioner Billups, to answer your question, we had multiple conversations with CBRE, who conducted the feasibility study, as well as Gray Star, who is the management company that we have engaged, but we have not signed any contracts with, to be the management company yet. So, with multiple conversations with both companies, that's how we kind of developed the mix, the unit mix that came about. It does seem like it is overly heavy on the one-bedroom units, but they conducted a thorough study, and that, they determined that this would be the best mix for this area. Commissioner Crandall, we have been discussing the management with a company called Gray Star. They're the largest management company in the United States. They are larger than the second, third, and fourth management companies put together. They have, I believe, five or six properties in the Kansas City area, and I believe about the same number in St. Louis, but they are all A properties, so they are all high-quality properties.
Any other questions for Mr. Kramer? Yes, Commissioner Billups?
To follow up, can you tell me what your target renter is going to be? I mean, are we talking about young, single, young couples, seniors? And I know you're not putting a restriction on it, but what is your, what is your target? What are you anticipating that this is, that is going to be looking at these?
Young professionals, elderly, plus fifty-five, and still considering, to get off subject for just a second, fifty-five-plus on the single-family homes is what I'm heavily leaning towards, and that's almost certain. But, young professionals, fifty-five and over. The rent is going to be higher than most one- and two-bedroom units in Blue Springs, so it is going to be a little bit more expensive. So, it's going to be young professional, it's going to be with somebody, somebody that's going to make a decent living.
Any other questions for Mr. Kramer? All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Maloney?
I'm back. Just a couple of follow-up comments. One, on the income, based upon our feasibility study, and the rents, which are gonna be about a dollar eighteen to a dollar twenty-five per square foot. The rents for the one-bedroom are gonna exceed a thousand dollars per month, plus there'll be utilities, plus covered parking options. The target income range is thirty-eight thousand to, I think, forty-five to forty-nine thousand. So, we've got, that's based upon our, the city's own housing study, and our own feasibility, our private feasibility study through CBRE that was last updated in October, and we've been in constant communication with them. A couple of other things, we do accept all of staff's conditions, and that is, and a couple of other things, with the, the new comprehensive plan that was developed by this planning commission and then implemented in 2015, it did evidence that there has been changed conditions since 2004, when the, the original Chapman Farms PUD was developed, and then in 2007, whenever the, the commercial zoning was approved for this property. Some of the changed conditions have been highlighted, but most importantly, the city decided to change the recommended land use of this exact property from commercial to high-density residential. We're asking for medium density. This property is, is identified on the comprehensive plan, the specific comprehensive plan for this area, as high-density residential and mixed-density neighborhood, which means plus twelve units per acre for high-density, and five to twelve units per acre for the mixed neighborhood. That, that's what's recommended on here. The comprehensive plan generally calls for an increase in multifamily within the city to thirty percent within the city, and a decrease of a commercial along Seven Highway, given the vacancies. The, the commercial was overdeveloped in anticipation of all of the homes that were going to be built, and quick succession under the Chapman Farms plan, and now we are faced with low-density residential that can't support the, the commercial. So, this will feed the adjacent commercial that's already existing, and support what's going on up the street. In terms of services, there has been a lot of concern about overcrowding at Mason Elementary, which is the Lee Summitt School that services this area. We have been in touch with the school district, they are well aware of the issue. In fact, on the April ballot, there is a no-tax-increase bond issue that has in that plan, plans for renovation and expansion of Mason Elementary. So, that is being contemplated already. And we have also been in touch with, with fire. The city has facilitated expansion by the fire district with a land deal, and I think that there was just something on the ballot last year to expand the Prairie Township. They're back to the drawing board because that bond was not approved by the voters. And the fire chief large has assured us that in the interim, they are capable of handling any increase in demand with their, with their partner agencies. And, so, I am, I'm comfortable with that. The chief of police for the city of Blue Springs has also, so that they will be capable of handling the additional demand. Obviously, there is, with any public services, you've got to get the people there to generate the revenue before you can put permanent fixes in place. This project will actually help the problems. The, I believe it's the commercial piece adjacent to Seven Highway is currently owned by the Blue Springs Land Bank. This property is off the tax rolls and has been, I don't think taxes have been paid on it since 2010. This is a substantial development, and based upon our estimates of value, working with CBRE and our market feasibility, this will add each year in excess of a million dollars to the taxing jurisdictions, which will mean seven-hundred thousand, round number, seven-hundred thousand to school district, another eighty-six, ninety thousand to the city, and a hundred-and-twenty thousand to the fire district. This, yes, it's, it's got a lot of residential components, but it will be taxed as commercial, because it is multifamily, and it will be controlled by developer. So, that means, instead of the nineteen percent assessment ratio, it's thirty-two percent, which is, this will be a, not only decrease the city's maintenance costs of, and carrying costs of having this land on its books, but it will also add to the tax base in this area substantially. Let me make sure I've... A couple of things with the, the property values, again, the development will add revenue to the taxing jurisdictions, and since this comprehensive plan was first developed by the city, Planning Commission in 2014, and then officially adopted and implemented in 2015, high-density residential has been designated on this site since then. Lots have continued to be sold in Chapman Farms Estates that whole time. Prices have gone up, per some of the letters that I've read over the last several years, and lot sale demand has continued to increase. So, second, there is, this is a multifamily versus commercial up in the, where we're asking for the rezoning. It's just as likely as not, the property values will go up versus going down, and we do have more than a five-hundred-foot buffer to protect, protect the multifamily, or protect the single-family in the Chapman Farms Estates. And it will also increase the value of the surrounding commercial properties, as there is greater demand for services on South Seven with a little bit higher density. I think that is it for, for developer's presentation. Are there any questions? For me?
Any questions for Ms. Maloney? Commissioner Billups?
I don't have really a question, I just wanted to make it aware. I actually, since you guys were considering working with CBRE, I used to work with CBRE, and I left there in November of 2019, but I just wanted to make aware that I no longer have connections, in case anyone's concerned.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Maloney? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Before I ask for witnesses, I would just remind, make comments towards the commission. If you have a specific question for staff or the applicant, they will keep track of those, and then after all comments, and people have been heard, I will give staff or the applicant a chance to address those questions or concerns. So, with that, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition? All right. Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition? I have speaker forms? So... So my glasses, I can lose. I'll just go by, and if I butcher your name, I'm sorry, but I'm trying to read this here. Is there a Thomas Hintonall?
Hintonall.
Hintonall? You will need to be, if you could spell that for us, just so we get it correctly. But you'll need to be sworn in first.
It'll be Hotel, India, November, Tango, Echo, November, Alpha Charlie Hotel.
All right, thank you, sir.
Hintonall.
And an address, please.
1105 Southwest Conchway, Lee Summit, Missouri, in the estate of Chapman Farms. And the biggest thing I want to bring up around is the overall investment, return on investment. Me and my wife both have done 20-plus years, I've been 23 years in the United States Army, my wife has been 14 years in the United States Army. We have taken our hard-earned money and our time and our investment to put into the Chapman Farms. Going through, we did our research, going off of the comprehensive plan that Blue Springs had developed years ago, and continue to update every few years of what they want to see done with this site and south of Blue Springs and on that southern region. Looking at all the different PUDs, looking at everything, when we built our house in this subdivision, there were single-family homes, it was plotted out through the comprehensive plans of this commission, and we were comfortable that our investment was going to return us value. With that single-family home plan up in front, the biggest piece was the 55 and older community, which represented the comprehensive plan of the city, toward eventually, once we retire, we become of age to then move forward, sell our bigger house to go to a smaller home in that whole comprehensive. But when we all make investments for our retirement and our future, we're looking to return on our investment. By adding other cogs into the wheel and changing plans to the initial sold that we took true faith from the city and the comprehensive plan, throws a cog into the wheel of our initial investment in properties that we have sold and to get to this point in our life, and I think that affects the stability of us as individuals as we move forward and go through with these plans. And that's the biggest thing I wanted to push on.
All right. Anybody else question? Any questions from the commissioners? All right, thank you very much, sir.
All right.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
You indicated that you had done research on the comprehensive plan. Did you not look at the 2015 changes?
I did miss.
You didn't look at?
Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks, I looked at the 2015 plan, and in that 2015 plan, there's also other multifamily 14-zone designated places up along Seven Highway, off of Colburn Road, and further down, that have yet to be developed as multifamily 14 homes, and the land is still vacant and barren. So there's still opportunity then to meet those multifamily homes. The Zone TF up along Seven Highway North, still part of Chapman Estate Farms, let me look at all the pieces, parts. So you've got the Chapman Ridge has multifamily 14 and TF homes. In addition to Chapman Ridge, and there wasn't no units on that one, Chapman Ridge, or Chapel Ridge has 46-unit multifamily home zone that can still go in. Woodlands at Chapman Farms have multifamily, mixed-use of multifamily 14 and single-family seven for 332 combined units. Eagles Ridge PRO has multifamily of 32 homes, and there's a whole lot of other places up in there that still have yet to be developed, still vacant, barren land that has still got for sale signs on some of the properties. Some of the property is in preliminary plat where some developers have come forward and stuff like that. So when we were looking at this, when me and my wife bought this property, and there's still a whole lot of other two-family home stuff up along that area, we were very comfortable with that single-family home and looking at, because my last house, they built apartments next to it. I didn't want to get in that situation again because my home value was reduced by probably about $30,000 to $40,000 what it was prior to when I bought the house and I lost. I've lived in multiple places across the United States, foreign countries, and everywhere else. I want to build a land base, and I chose Blue Springs to build this land base for my family because of your comprehensive plan, because of the desire and the integrity you guys put into your community development to make it a strong community. And that's why we chose to live in Blue Springs and bring our family here to do this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Were there any other questions from the commissioners? All right. Next person I have is Jessica Agnelli Krawczek. Is that correct? I'm sure I, Krawczek?
Krawczek.
I was close.
Jessica Agnelli Krawczek. I live at 9223 Southwest 12th Street at the estates of Chapman Farms.
Would you spell your last name for us, just so we make sure we have it correctly?
Sure. K-R-A-W, C is in cat, Z is in zebra, Y-K.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of the estate of Chapman Farms, where I live with my husband and my young child. I have become, I'm an attorney, so I've kind of become the clearinghouse of a lot of the residents' complaints about this. A lot of people couldn't be here today, they wanted to be here today, a lot of people did show up today. I'm here to talk on most of their behabes, because I'll tell you this right now, a lot of people are scared about this, most of them are angry about this, but all of us are determined to live in a community in which we believed we were moving into and building our dream The residents of our neighborhood include people in the military, retirees, attorneys, healthcare professionals, stay-at-home parents, schoolteachers, fire personnel, ambulance services, and other law enforcement officers. We're a community who cares. We care about Blue Springs. We're not saying, "Don't build this stuff." We're saying, "Respect what we were moving into." I think when you look at all of the residents' complaints, it all boils down to expectations and promises. When we decided to build, we expected to build on a place in which it was promised that there would be single-family homes in front of us. Every person behind me will have a separate story for why they do not want to see this, but it really comes down to expectations. We expected to build in a community that did not have a 12-building apartment complex in front of it. That was not expected. I don't think anyone behind me will say that that was at all expected when we built our homes. As Tom said before me, all of our residents made significant investments into their future. They built their dream home, they built their last home, they built their first home, based on the city's promises and the comprehensive plan. The residents have overwhelmingly told me that they would have never built in this neighborhood if they were going to be looking at an apartment complex every time they drove into this neighborhood. And it doesn't matter how many, how you dress it up, it's still 12 buildings, three-story buildings of apartment complexes. It doesn't matter that they're garden apartment complexes, they're apartment complexes, and that's not what we expected. I used to live, my family and I lived on North Blue Springs. We loved our neighborhood where we lived. Slowly, the neighborhood started to get a little bit more crowded. People were parking all up and down the streets, people were blocking the sidewalks with their vehicles. People weren't taking care of their property because those houses were being rented out to other people. We, every morning when I drove to work, I would drive down Seven and see the estates of Chapman Farms, and I thought, "I'd really like to live there one day." Beautiful homes, setback, and so fortunately enough, we were in a position to do that. I would have never built there if there were these apartment complexes to stare at. My daughter goes to Mason Elementary. The tax proposal that's on the ballot is to solve the already 125% capacity of the school. In no way was that tax put on there with the idea that these 300-unit apartments were going in. The school's already overcapacity. It's the responsibility of this commission to promote public safety, health, and general welfare of the residents and visitors of Blue Springs. Our community respectfully states that the developers' interests shouldn't be put above our interests. To rezone this area would be establishing a very dangerous precedent. You will see more and more out-of-state builders coming in trying to put up apartment complexes. South Blue Springs was made and developed for higher, for higher-income homes. Putting this apartment complex up there eviscerates those plans. We played by the rules when we built our home and when our developer built their community, and we just ask that Kramer play by the rules and not seek to change them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask a little bit of a clarifying question about the, what you called the single-family promise that you made. Are you referring to the comprehensive plan previous from 2015, or what were you, who was making that promise to you?
When we looked at the comprehensive plan, we do understand that there were changes from the 2014 to 15, 2004 to 14 to 15. When we moved in, the area right in front of our homes was zoned for 50 and older single-family homes. When you looked at the rest of the area, as Tom spoke before, there's plenty other area where these can be built. In no way would, did we, when we looked at those plans, did it suggest that 13 apartment complexes would be put right in front of the entrance to our property?
When you were looking at the, were you looking at the 2015 plan or?
I was looking at the 2014 plan at that time.
Okay, thank you.
When we were seeking to move.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Black? If you could state your name and address, please.
Yes, Melissa Black. I live at 9308 Southwest Orca Court in Blue Springs, and I am one of the residents in the estates of Chapman Farms. Thank you for letting us speak tonight, Commission. As Jessica said, I'm honored to be one of the people and kind of help represent some of the residents who either are here tonight or who couldn't be here. So I'm married, I have three kids, and we moved to Blue Springs in 2014. We decided to build our first home in 2018, and we made that decision to move to the estates. And kind of as Jessica said, I had seen the estates, this was something that we desired because of, it was exactly what we wanted, set off from the road, didn't have any of the multifamily kind of usage around it, and I can agree with that. If it had had those apartment buildings there, would have never, would have never chosen it. We, we were told that it would stay single-family homes in that area between the highway and the development, and that was one of the reasons we decided to build there. We could have chosen to move anywhere. We could have chosen to go to Lee Summit or any of the other communities, but we, we wanted to stay in Blue Springs, and we made that decision to stay in the estates because we felt it was important and we do like the community. So we made that choice to stay in the city, in the community, in that neighborhood specifically. I remember, sorry, obviously, a change in the zoning does not further the intent of what is currently in place in support of the city or the neighborhood, because it changes it from multifamily to, I mean, single-family to multifamily. And I, again, I can speak for all of us, I feel like Jessica kind of took all my thunder a little bit, but we, all of us believe that this will negatively impact our property values. I know that they say it may not, but they can't say it won't. And all of us have, we've put all of our money into this in our homes, and this is our, this is what we've saved up for. This is how we are going to, you know, support our families. This is it. So the building of an apartment, all these apartment buildings next to our neighborhood, it changes the actual character of the neighborhood. You're not going to be able to drive into our neighborhood without driving through that and seeing it, and there's no way to take that back later. There's no way to say, "Well, you can fix your neighborhood later," or it will, it'll be okay, because once you put that in there, it changes it, I mean, it changes it. It negatively scars the area for eternity, right? That's just it. And the bigger question to me was, well, why? Like one of the earlier speakers said, there's lots of, there's lots of other land that's already zoned for multifamilies. So we are not questioning that maybe that's needed somewhere, but why right next to us when we were, we were promised this? This is what we've already invested in. Go build those where there's already, where it's already appropriately zoned. Don't change it for us when we've already been investing in our lives in this community. We also are very concerned about the precedent this sets for other established neighborhoods who would also already be living next to areas that are single-family zoned. Are they all going to have to worry about this as well? I think you take that risk of making all these other citizens worry about that. You know, we, I feel like we all invested in good faith, we've put our time and energy and our savings into these homes, and to possibly have this all devalued, I think you take a chance of having people say, "Why would we want to live in Blue Springs if they're not willing to protect its citizens?" If they're going to take the, the worth of these other people over our own citizens who are already here. And as for the schooling and the other things, I mean, I know myself as a mother, I worry about how this will affect the school, because Mason is over 125% capacity already. We don't know that tax increase will go through. We do have the fire, the police, all these other things. I just can't believe that all that's just going to magically be okay when you add in that many people like that so quickly. All I ask is that you help us to protect, you, all of the commissioners, help us to protect our investments, our safety, listen to what we who live here, live in Blue Springs, and what we're asking you to do, protect our, protect our investments, protect our safety, and deny this zoning change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question for you. When you make the comment, you were told that would be single-family, who was telling you that?
When we were building, we were told that everything would be single-family.
But who was telling you that? Was it like your real estate agent, the builder, the developer?
I don't remember exactly, but I do remember checking on that because there's no way I would have built if there'd been, if I'd been told it was multifamily and apartment buildings everywhere. There's, so we did ask for sure how it was zoned, and they said it was single-family.
Okay. Any other questions for the witness? Yes?
Chair, I'd like to ask the previous attorney, question in reference to what she just asked, if it's possible.
Oh, I think she already.
No, she stepped down with her daughter.
Oh, she stepped down for a sec. Let's, if we have any other questions for Ms. Black, and then when she comes back in.
Okay.
Any other, were there any other questions for Ms. Black? Commissioner Fairbanks?
I don't have a question for Ms. Black, but I have a question for staff.
Okay, can we hold that to the end? Because I got one more, I think.
Okay.
Do I have two more?
No.
I have Zach Goff?
Thank you. I'd like to address a few points as I was sitting here making some notes.
Sorry. Name an address, please.
Zachary Goff, G-O-F-F, address is six, I'm with the law firm Oswald Roman Room, LLC. The address is 601 Northwest Jefferson Street, Blue Springs, Missouri, 64013. Thank you. I submitted a letter that is in the packets with everyone tonight, but before I get into the points that are in the letter, I represent DAC Realty Development Company, LLC, and the subdivision, the Estates at Chapman Farms. So I'm going to be speaking on behalf of them this evening in opposition to this proposed development. First couple of points off my notes before I turn to the letter, it just, it seems that the medium-density or MF14 zoning was in part at least achieved by combining Lot 1 and 2 together, which they've designated. by combining Lot 1 and 2 together, which they've designated Lot 2 as apartments, which, under the code, I believe those should be classified as row houses rather than apartments if they're sort of fourplex design buildings. I would ask that, for calculating purposes of density, that it seems like Lot 1 and 2 should be separated by building type, and under the staff report, it shows that there were 29 acres allotted to determining the zoning or the density of these, and those should be separated out. And I think probably what we find is that Lot 1 is MF-18 or high-density residential if it's parsed from Lot 2. The comprehensive plan also includes areas, as some of these residents pointed out a few times, I won't, you know, across the street on 7th Highway, there's plenty of other areas for multifamily development that are coming into this area. Also, my client, DAC Realty Development Company, has put in substantial investments into the stormwater and the storm drainage situation here to the tune of $500,000, which is why the developer here would not have to do any stormwater improvements to this area which would otherwise be required. And I would point out that my client has also made repeated offers to purchase this property as well, which have been declined. And he does have a backup offer pending on this right now, so we'll disclose that before I go into my letter. And some of the points in my letter have already been hit on by the residents, but in point one of my letter, in which we're opposing any effort to rezone, amend the PUD, or replat Brookside into Earhart Estates, I'd like to point out that we do not believe that criteria 1 or criteria 6 of the rezoning review requirements are met. Criteria 1 is, as I stated before, the application is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and any official plan or program developed under the guidance of the comprehensive plan, and in particular, the relationship of land uses within the proposed district and the relationship with uses existing or anticipated in surrounding districts. So criteria 6 requires considering the effect of approval on the condition or value of property in the city or in the vicinity, including the likelihood of surrounding areas to be developed in accordance with the comprehensive plan. It sounds, based on what the staff has stated, they've considered this, but what I would like to submit tonight are the attached opinions of realtors and survey, appraisers that we have gathered, that we work with, which they all state that the value will be negatively impacted of the Estates properties with the addition of this subdivision zoning change. So further, this Earhart rezoning, you know, right now, the Estates, the properties are currently selling, some of them in excess of $600,000. The average sales price is in excess of $400,000, and just recently, there were 10 homes sold above $450,000. And we think that the development that's going on with the Estates and the single-family homes that were slotted to be developed in Brookside is in compliance with the current PUD and doesn't require changing. And I've attached within my letter a copy of recent sales in the Estates. Further, point, you know, we don't believe that Earhart, it also fails criteria number 2 of the rezoning requirements, which states you have to consider whether the application furthers the intent of the proposed zoning district and supports that of any abutting zoning districts. This criterion is clearly not met, as the point of the Earhart application is to change the existing zoning district and upend the promises made to the Estates owners and its developer, which started building these properties, and we've already received word from one of our builders that, who was building and just sold two $600,000-plus homes in there, he's not going to purchase any more lots until a decision is made on this property. One of the residents here hit on the promises made, and I feel like that's an important point that can't be understated. I mean, all these residents bought into a PUD that was based on recorded documents that they had reason to believe were not going to change when they built their homes. And I think those promises need to be seriously considered if they're going to be basically, essentially broken. Under point 3, also think Earhart fails criteria number 5, which is the ability of the city or other government agencies to provide any services, facilities, or programs that might be required if the application were approved. First and foremost, Prairie Township Fire District, this is not a knock on them personally or individually, but they have a problem with getting money out of their citizens. Most of Prairie Township is not even located within Blue Springs. It's located south and in more rural areas along 50th Highway and south of that, down toward Pleasant Hill. They have repeatedly asked and gone to their voters for more money. The email from Chief Large even indicates that the Prairie Township Fire District cannot accommodate this. They can't service it without relying on neighboring agencies. A lot of want of Fire District or CJC. So I think that has to be taken into consideration when we're looking at whether the agencies can truly support this. The Fire District EMT service down there is going to be critical for this project and moving this many residents into one area that is going to be so dense. I mean, it seems to me in that email from Chief Large, it was in the packet, he is saying that they cannot support it. And again, one of the other, one of the residents of the Estates hit on the Mason Elementary School concerns that the Lee Summit representative from the school board or school district stated, they're, again, relying on future tax dollars to come in to build a, an addition to the elementary school in the area. I can't see that that, I mean, if this is already in place, if this were within Blue Springs, I mean, this is Lee Summit School District. I mean, those are voters on the other side in different city. So there's a lot that's kind of hinged on whether our services, government services, can really sustain development like this right now. Finally, point 4, we think Earhart fails criteria 7, which is the requested zoning change is justified by changing conditions since the existing zoning was designated or by an error in the current designation. Essentially, the staff report states that the changing conditions were that, there is currently, to quote from it, "There is currently an oversupply of commercially zoned land along South 7th Highway corridor on both the east and west side of the corridor, and the existing properties will likely never be fully developed as zoned." That oversupply is not a change, in my opinion, that oversupply is not a change in condition that now warrants a zoning change. That condition has existed for quite some time, and the Estates and its residents shouldn't have to bear the burden for failed commercial developments in that area. Everybody was counting on the Walmarts to come in, which is stated earlier. But that hasn't, that's been quite a while since I think that was proposed and has not gone anywhere. So I'm not sure what the changing condition now is that warrants changing the PUD and the zoning for this property. It seems that there is none, and no one's argued that there's an error in the existing PUD. A lot of effort and time was put into creating the PUD in the early 2000s and developing the entire Chapman Farms master plan, and it just doesn't, it, there doesn't seem to be the threshold, we haven't, it seemed to hit the threshold for changing the PUD. It should stand, it should not change. And so for those, for those reasons, and some of the reasons I hit on my notes, the Estates, DAC Realty Development Company opposed the application for Earhart Estates and called upon the planning commission and to vote against the application for rezoning, the PUD concept plan, and the plat for the proposed Earhart Estates. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Prattoff?
So as an attorney, I have a question for you. Would you say that oral agreements are about as good as the paper they aren't written on?
Well, I would, as an attorney, I would say no, not necessarily, but they could be. Enforcing them is one thing, but the agreement itself could be enforceable as an oral agreement. I would argue, though, that the recorded documents, the city going through this entire process of creating a PUD and then recording it, that makes it a public document. I mean, anybody could go look at that. It's not like the oral promises made necessarily, I'll go back to the questions that were sort of earlier in clarifying that. If you can't rely on recorded documents about PUDs and things like that when you're building a property, I'm not sure what you can rely on, other than just to say it's not, nothing is worth, you know, not to say nothing's worth anything, but if that's, if that's the standard that we're just going to throw it all out because a new plan comes along, then I think that's, again, as one of the residents pointed out, kind of a dangerous precedent.
The reason why I ask that, because it seems like there's quite a few citizens that have expressed concerns about what they were promised, and I was just wondering if you felt there's, there's some credence involved in what they're saying.
I absolutely do think that with what they're promised, and now who's making the promises and how it's made is, but I do think, yes, that there's a lot of credence in, just as like homeowner, homeowners restrictions, HOA restrictions, create promises and covenants, those are contracts between its residents and its owners. And that's, you know, if those are broken, they have an enforceable contractual right. I feel like there is an implied contract between the city and the residents that if all of these criteria are not met, or if there's concern that they're not met, that the existing zoning has to, has to be maintained.
Chair, I have a question for you. I don't know if it's proper to ask this time, but can we ask the city attorney if, if anybody's looked at what he's talked about? Because I've seen these emails, and I've wondered if anybody's had a chance to view that to see if what he's talking about has any, any credence.
Yeah. Our city attorney can comment if she would like.
Which point that he's made, are you asking about?
About what he's saying, how the legal value of what was recorded, of what most of these citizens were promised when they, when they developed their property or when they purchased it.
I'm going to let Mr. Mallon speak to that because I saw that you were standing up there earlier.
Can I hold? Yes. Just that, if there's any other questions for Mr. Goff before I, yes, Commissioner Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Goff. You mentioned that criteria 1, in your view, was not met in that, I believe that one says that we're not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
The existing zoning is, is in compliance. The change would, would not be, yes.
But I, I think staff had said that, that in the comprehensive plan, it now says higher-density residential. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
So could you explain how this is not in compliance with higher-density residential in your view?
Well, the existing PUD, in my view, did have, allow for higher-density residential in the comprehensive plan. I've got attached here's the, our existing PUD. And I guess higher-density residential is sort of a subjective, what, what does that mean? I think certainly apartment complex would be higher-density, objectively, a higher-density housing, but so are small villas relative to large estate homes. That's higher-density housing. So are duplexes, fourplexes. Those are higher-density housing. And that seemed to be allowed for under the, the concept plan of the Chapman Farms master plan, and then the revisions in the comprehensive plan. So I think, I think the, my opinion was that the, and what I put in the letter, was that the existing PUD does meet the current comprehensive plan with its existing plans. The, the smaller homes together for seniors is higher-density housing. The second point on that is that the senior housing piece, the comprehensive plan still calls for housing for seniors, and that is not specifically addressed here. And that, yes, they're available for seniors, available for anyone to buy, but they're not specifically towards seniors as they were before.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Goff? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Before I get to you, Mr. Mallon, is there anyone else that did not sign a form that wants to speak in opposition?
She's got one.
You do have a form?
I have a form.
Okay.
May I?
Yeah, come on up. You can just, can she just leave the form on podium? You can just leave the form on the podium, you just need to be sworn in and state your name and address.
Yes.
And I would just ask?
You might want the form because my name?
If you have new information and?
I do. I have different questions. I've been keeping track and not to repeat.
Okay.
My name's really hard to spell. It's Christine O'Patroni Yacel.
Okay.
Do you want the form?
Yes.
Thank you. And that'll have your address.
Yes, 805.
You might just state it for the record, though.
805 Southwest Green Meadow Drive in Blue Springs. I do not live in Chapman Estates, but I do live just a teeny bit north of the picture there.
Okay.
Okay. So we moved to Blue Springs in June of 2019, so very recently. I live right next to where Edgewater is being developed by Summit Homes. Apparently Summit Homes built my house, decided they did not want to build anything else, and came back many years later to turn that into higher-density housing than it was originally zoned for. So there's a tremendous amount of high-density already going in there, higher-density, I should say. I'm concerned that this plan will have the same problem. If you let it go forward and they build apartments, there is no guarantee that phases 2 and 3 will actually happen, just like happened next door to me. So I'm kind of concerned about that.
I can't hear her.
I'm sorry. Should I stand a little closer?
Yes, thank you.
My other concern is staff said, let me find my note here, he believes that this will positively affect commercial property nearby. There was no real discussion of the effect, one way or another, on residential by him, but he did say it would positively affect commercial, and I question that that's the only concerns we seem to have. It's very disturbing to me. Nextly, the three-story architecture simply doesn't match the rest of Blue Springs South. So you are now introducing a gateway view of Blue Springs that is perhaps not the viewpoint that you'd like people to have as they approach from the south. There are not enough traffic lights already on 7. I have to go down 7 right to Mason School to do a U-turn to go north to come to this meeting. I had to wait more than five minutes just to be able to come north. You're going to add even more traffic here. It's going to be a disaster. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Casey?
Just a comment, and your first concern with the phases, we did ask the developer earlier, and they are, at this point at least, planning to develop all three concurrently, it sounds like, so that may not be an issue?
Well, that's not exactly what I heard. I heard that the bottom section closest to the Estates would be build a suit, sell a lot, we'll see what happens, but the infrastructure will be there. That's not really the same.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Yes. Up front here, and then I'll get you in back there.
Kevin Inyard, 521 Northeast Station Drive, Lee Summit, Missouri, 64086. I work for the developer, DAK Realty DevCo. I just want to quickly do a memory lane check, because several years ago, we had to come when this was a foreclosed neighborhood, the Estates at Chapman Farms. One complete phase developed, two phases left undeveloped. At the time, the previous developer prior to foreclosure had minimum square footages of 2,300 on the main level square foot. I don't know if it was a typo or what the issue was, because honestly, I don't think they could have fit on the lots as designed anyway. So we, we came back and we asked for a revision just strictly to the square footage requirement, dropped that down to 1,700. We faced a litany of questions at the time, and the major concern that was expressed by the planning commission and city council, many of you were here at that meeting when we did our presentation, was, and what we were told in some of the comments was, the Estates at Chapman Farms was Blue Springs' hope for a premier neighborhood in Blue Springs. It was the hope that for the higher dollar, the bigger estate houses in Blue Springs. And the big concern with granting our request at the time was whether or not that would still hold true. And so as a consequence, we thankfully were approved. The comment we made at the time was we would start at the 1,700 minimum, and then the market would take us up as build jobs and everything progressed, and that's what we've seen over time. We went from 300,000 to, I'm sorry, yeah, right at 300,000 to 400,000 roughly in sales price just starting out. And today, as Zach mentioned, most of our stuff is being built at 450 to 650. That's what Blue Springs told us they wanted. That's what we delivered for you. And now this, whether you want to talk about could or couldn't, I think at some point, you've got the common sense test. This will adversely affect people building $650,000 in that neighborhood. So do you really want what you told us you wanted, or do you not? That's the question tonight. That's the biggest question. I think there's also been a little bit of confusion as to terms, comprehensive plan, PUD. Some of the residents have got up, and we've talked about comprehensive plan. In some cases, I think they were legitimately referencing, they, they... In some cases, I think they were legitimately referencing, they looked at the comprehensive plan. In other cases, I think they were referencing the PUD plan, which is two different things, right? But as somebody that's out looking for a house and you're looking at a neighborhood that you're going to make a purchase in, recorded document searches is where you start, right? The PUD was the recorded document. And so that's what they were basing the purchase decisions on. So I think that's important to keep in mind, too, when you're making this consideration is they were making the purchase decisions, my guess. I can't jump in people's minds, but my guess, based on the recorded PUD document plan. So I'd ask for you to keep that in mind, too. That's it.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Enyard? All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
And I had one other gentleman back there.
Do you have a test for your last business case?
Yes, sir, I will.
My name is John Easely, E-A-S-L-E-Y. My address is 9304 Southwest Orca Court, Blue Springs, Missouri, 64015. I live in the Estates of Chapman Farms. I'll just be very brief. I want to make a couple of points so that we're all painfully obvious of the truth. The attorney for the developer mentioned that the Lee Summit R7 has a bond issue coming up in April to possibly fix the issues of Mason School. That bond issue is almost a quarter of a billion dollars. Most of you all are aware, very well aware of the political climate around this area with bond issues. There is no guarantee that bond issue will pass. So the first thing she's telling you on the school district is we're going to put our faith, hope, and trust that possibly this comes true. If it doesn't come true, then what have we done? We have taken more children, put them into an even worse school district, not academically, but crowded because a bond issue didn't pass. That's her first issue. The second issue, she makes a statement during her discussions about the fire chief from Prairie Township, that he said that a bond issue didn't pass and that possibly they'll put in for another one or one will come forward. Again, what is she asking you to do? She's asking you to put your hope, faith, and trust, and possibly maybe the stars will align and this will happen. And it was pointed out by a colleague and friend of mine, Prairie Township does not have a ladder truck. So for a three-story apartment fire, you're going to need a ladder truck to get there. And finally, in one issue I had early on with the discussion from the representative from the city, I am not a real estate agent, I'm not an appraiser, I'm just a police officer for another agency who happens to live in the Estates of Chapman Farm. But I don't think I need a degree or a background in appraising to understand that multifamily housing apartments slapped up against 400 to 600,000 homes is going to cause my property value to increase. If that were true, then I believe Mission Hills would have the most apartments ever surrounding their home. And finally, with that thought in mind, the developer mentions that there are single-family homes that will be built as between a buffer between the Estates of Chapman Farms and the apartment complexes. And I don't remember, I think he said 1,800 square feet was the minimum, if I'm... 1,800 square feet. So as was mentioned by a guy, a gentleman earlier on a previous issue, it'd be surprising what 1,700 square feet will cost you, 300 to, you know, 400,000 homes. Yours is 14? Okay, so yours is bigger, so 300,000, 400,000 would be a fair target, sir, correct?
You need to still address the commissioner.
I stand corrected. So 300 to 400,000 for a home that big would not be unusual, I don't think. How many of those homes are going to sell when you're like, you get to look at your back door, because we made a big deal at the front, it's going to face the west, but you get to look at your back door in an apartment complex in a parking lot? I thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Easely? All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Yes.
All right. Need to be sworn in?
Do you have a test for your last business case?
I do. I do.
And your name and address, please.
I am probably, myself and my wife, the most adversely affected by this whole situation of us. We live at 26...
I don't want to interrupt. I just interrupted. I need your name and address, please, for the record.
John Straight, 26101 Mason School Road.
Thank you.
You see that white square there? Yeah, where that thing's going around, around, around. That's where we live. Do you see what's going to be right there at our side door? About 50 feet from our property line? A school ground and a barking dog park. They sent a letter, anybody that is within 185 feet, we're the only ones in that zone of the proposed building sites, except up here, those other single-family homes, that won't be affected like we will. Look at, that's all one big field right now where those apartments are going to be. That drainage area will be cut in half with parking lots and building roofs that are impervious to water absorption. It's going to affect everything anybody in that area lives. It is not going to be a pretty site. Not only that, right now, we can look out and see stars of a morning, of an evening, anytime in dark hours. When that happens, all we will see is a big floodlight. It won't be anything... Another thing, we were told when we bought in 2014 that all that surrounding area was zoned single-family. Now look what they're proposing, something that most people would never want. Most people that are living there now don't want it. In fact, I haven't heard anyone that does. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Straight? All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? All right. Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, I want to speak.
Come on up, be sworn in.
Yep.
State your name and address, please.
Do you have a test for your last business case?
I do. My name is Brian Shaw. I live at 617 Southwest Muriel Drive in Grain Valley. I work for a company that builds single-family homes. Actually, I just potentially made an offer today on six lots in Chapman Farms to purchase until I found out about this development just earlier today. At that point, I probably wouldn't purchase those six lots if this passes because current values of what I would build in there, what I'm projecting currently per square foot would shrink, so the return of my money wouldn't be invested in Blue Springs. I would go back to Grain Valley where I currently build, where I'm getting more due to no single-family homes in Snibar Farms or Woodbury or Rosewood Hills. There's a reason why people don't want that in their neighborhoods because it will not say destroy their value, but people that rent don't take care of their property. They have no investment in it. A single-family home that you own or I own or they own, they're going to take some pride in it, own it, take care of it, maintain it. So for me, I'm totally against it just because my investment, I think, sooner than later would be devalued.
All right.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Shaw? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to let Mr. Mallon address a couple of concerns, questions that were brought up.
Yeah, the city was keeping track of questions that the city could respond to. I think Mr. Enyard did a good job of explaining that there is a pretty substantial difference between the city's adopted comprehensive plan designation for the property and the S1 area plan designation for the property and the existing PUD concept plan. The existing PUD concept plan has been in place since 2004, does show the property as a single-family villas. That plan has never been developed. The comprehensive plan was adopted in 2014, put into effect in 2015, and does call for high-density residential and mixed-density residential. I believe there was a question about what does high-density residential say and that there was no definition for that. I'd like to read the definition of high-density residential from the comprehensive plan. Says, "High-density residential is residential areas, excuse me, of predominantly multi-unit buildings or sites, apartments, and supporting institutional uses, primarily located in corridors or at the transition areas between neighborhoods and centers or corridors. Net density for these areas is typically more than 12 units an acre." The balance of the site is mixed-density neighborhood, which is five to 12 dwelling units per acre with a range of housing formats. So I just wanted to answer that question there. In addition, there was some question about combining the two apartment lots and discussion about how the townhouses should technically be qualified or categorized as a row house under the Unified Development Code. Staff does not consider these to be row houses. The definition and lot parameters for row houses contemplate fee simple lot ownership with each individual unit being on its own lot. These are proposed to be multiple buildings on one lot, which meets the definition of the apartment complex. And staff views these two properties being combined in order to determine the overall net density because they are both apartment complexes. They're both being proposed to be rezoned under the MF14, and that is why staff believes that they do meet the density requirements falling under 14 dwelling units an acre. The final question, I think that was actually, I think there were only those two really specific questions about that staff could answer. Happy to answer any other questions or if anybody has any questions for the developer.
Any questions for Mr. Mallon? Yes, Commissioner Casey?
This is more of a broad question. I think someone earlier brought up the 30% number in terms of multifamily as a goal that we have as a city. I was just curious if we had information on, are we currently at that or are we under or over?
Let me ask real quick. Currently, we are at about 28%. That number does include duplexes as part of multifamily, which is a little bit unique, but we are at about 28% citywide at this point. And that's based upon the existing housing that's out there today, not about what area is zoned to allow for future single-family homes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Mallon? Mr. Kramer, would you or one of your colleagues like to just address some of the concern or questions? And you're still sworn in, Ms. Maloney.
Okay, hold on just a second. Couple of things. It's my understanding that the Blue Springs School District, Lee Summit School District bond issue is a no-tax-increase bond ballot measure in April. And Chief Large with Prairie Township, the fire district, he said, yes, we can facilitate this through our mutual aid partners. So whether Prairie Township has the necessary equipment or not, they do have the capability to service their service area, whether it is self-performing or subcontracting that workout. Also, these apartments will all be sprinkled as per the code, which will, and there's more extensive fire separation requirements for multifamily housing. The phasing, yes, it will be, all of the site work will be done and utilities will be done in one phase, just as Chapman Farms Estates has lots for sale. And how quickly those are sold is based on the market. That is how it will be for our single-family homes. It will be market-driven. We don't want this to become rental. We want these to be single-family owner-occupied homes precedent. A couple of things there with the CHAT study, which was the housing study that the city staff commissioned and reported on to the council, and about this time last year, there was discussion by the council at that time of, we agree there probably needs to be more multifamily housing. We just don't know where, which was kind of surprising because we have a pretty new comprehensive plan that says exactly where it should go. Also, in that study, it says if we don't build more multifamily housing, the housing stock, the single-family housing stock will continue to be converted to rentals as it is now. And as we've heard tonight, there is the belief that rentals are not as well-maintained as owner-occupied, single-family homes. The multifamily portion of this will be maintained by a national property management company, and it is in our best interest to make sure that it continues to be well-maintained so we can attract renters. There are, this is a, yes, it is an investment, but it is also a project that the developer intends to stay involved in. So just responding on those things. And I guess, I guess the question right now is, the question was posed, you know, how is this multifamily going to affect the single-family? But I guess also the question is how would commercial development affect the single-family that's already there? That's what's planned. This is either an equal or a less intense use than the already planned commercial and how it's already zoned there. So, I mean, the question is, is there really that much difference between multifamily or commercial? I argue because it is on, it's lower on the zoning scale, it's less intense, but when you look at it in terms of trips and the infrastructure required, it may be more intense. So it's just as likely as not that this will be better for the neighbors than commercial. They argue otherwise. But I think that's all that we have. Anything to add? Any other, any questions for me or the developer?
Any other questions for Ms. Maloney? Or the developer? Yes, Commissioner Casey?
Just one other question that came up a couple of times is why did you select this specific site? Were other sites along seven considered? Or what advantages did this site maybe give you over the others that made you want to choose this specific area? And that may be...
You know, this was for sale. It is on, the city owns it, and the city owns one parcel and a bank owns the other parcel. There is lots of foreclosed properties all around here. We chose this site because it is recommended by the comprehensive plan to be high-density residential. It is right along Seven Highway. It's not appropriate to put single-family right along Seven Highway, and commercial development is not feasible here. To develop the land as single-family for the entire parcel or just offset from Seven Highway is also not feasible because economically feasible because of the large restricted area, the conservation easement area, which we have increased, but there's no development that can occur within that because it's drainage for, it's set aside as drainage area. So those are some of the reasons, and we were able to come to an agreement that the land bank has approved developer to purchase this property. We're under contract with both the land bank and the bank that owns the other parcel.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
And we ask that you vote in favor of our applications. Thank you.
All right. I've ended the witnesses.
Can we ask a question to staff, though? When he brung up about the zoning, my question was, oh, it's already zoned, it's multifamily on Seven Highway? Is it already...
You're going to have to, if you're going to talk, you're going to have to come up to the mic, but I can't take anymore because I ended the witness.
So the gentleman there, the staff on...
You'll need to...
Mike said that...
Address me, though, please.
Oh, Mr. Graham, he had mentioned, staff did, that the city's goal was 30%. Oh, try, but Mr. Graham, he had mentioned, Staff did, that the city's goal was 30% of multifamily. He said currently today they're at 28%. On what is currently zoned on Seven Highway, south of, say, Liggett, would the 30% be met with what's already zoned as multifamily?
He can... Staff doesn't have any way of determining that now, based just on zoning, it would be based on as projects come in.
Well, no, 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 I'm saying, if what is zoned multifamily today, if that was to be developed out as multifamily, would that exceed the 30% that the city has as a goal?
Again, we don't know that, because we don't know how many development units would come in on that multifamily, and we also don't know how many single-family units are gonna come in, in the balance of the residentially-single-family zone.
So how many acres are there currently as multifamily?
I don't have that information.
So if I could just take it off of this being 29 acres, and say there's 338 units, and let's say there's 100 acres out there, is what...
We cannot make that determination, because somebody, there are a lot of different land uses allowed in the multifamily zoning, and so it could come in as lesser density than an apartment complex, it could come in as...
But if it's high-density, it probably would meet that 30%, though.
I can't make that statement. I can't agree with that. Because I simply cannot make that judgment based upon a hypothetical of what would it go there, based upon also...
So if the city did a study on high-density before they accepted this, to make sure it would meet that 30%, then would that be a better...
The city has not done that study.
No, I said, would that make, be a better step before you approve this, would be to make sure that study happened to where the city met its 30% without rezoning single-family homes?
Your question, and the Commissioner will take your comments into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna bring it back up here for discussion among the Commissioners on the record. Commissioner Fairbanks?
Mr. Mallon, we have approved several duplex developments in the past year. Would you say that that 28% figure includes or excludes those?
That 28% does include those developments.
It does include those.
It does, yes.
All right, any more discussion on the record? Commissioner Billups?
Excuse me. As most of you know, I have been around quite a while. I was involved in the original Chapman Farms plans, and I know how much time and effort was put into those to make sure that there was a broad mix of housing types and budget, and it was all very carefully laid out as to which parts went where, for, you know, a variety of reasons. Respectfully, I disagree with Staff on their statement that there's a overabundance of commercial space. I've said that before on Seven Highway. It may be misplaced. We enlarged the amount of commercial space on the other side of Seven Highway for a project that's now not going to happen, and at that point, we, that's where we took away the multifamily housing, because that's where the original Chapman Farms plan thought it should be. This side of Seven Highway was meant to be the high end of Chapman Farms, of the entire Chapman Farms development. And I think we should still try and stay to that as closely as we can. And if we're gonna rezone something out of commercial and go back to multifamily, or go to multifamily, I think we ought to go back to where it was originally planned in Chapman Farms, on the other side of Seven, in the lots that used to be designated for Lowe's and Walmart, that are not gonna come in, are not gonna be there. That's what I'd like to see, and I'd like to see the commercial space along Seven Highway remain that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, since he's putting, Mr. Chair, since he's putting things on record...
That's what I wanted to do.
I will, too. Because I think a promise made should be a promise kept. The high-end that I heard so long, that we needed high-end properties in Blue Springs for years and years, and even, I think Mr. Goff said that you were not a real estate agent? I am, have been for 34 years, and I've been an instructor, so I need to put that out there, so that you know where I'm coming from as far as my thoughts. I'm considering, I'm concerned that, he says that the apartments are gonna go in first, but then who would want to buy a townhome or a villa backed up to all these apartment complexes? So I'm concerned that those second and third phases would not happen anyway. Not saying that they wouldn't. But commercial, I would very much rather have commercial than the apartment complexes. It's just like in Lee Summit. A lot of you came from Lee Summit, I thank you very much for coming to Blue Springs. A lot of places in Lee Summit, for years and years, didn't develop commercial until it grew like Blue Springs is south. A lot of parts down on Prior Road, they didn't grow, and now they've got a Walmart down there. Because they grew, we've gotta give ourselves time. We will get commercial. And I think that's a really good thing. It's a thing called economic obsolescence, is what we're trying to do here. And that means, if you don't know, economic obsolescence is bring something in that's not a part of your property, but it's adjoining your property, that is going to affect your property. I drove up in there, and I looked down, and I saw the view from the homes, I think nobody called the police on me, wondering who in the world I was scooping out. But I drove in the subdivision, I looked down, and I looked, and I thought, I'm gonna, excuse me, I'm gonna see apartment complexes, and I don't think that's what you all thought you were going to get when you moved there. I appreciate the high-end homes that have been brought to our city, and I really want to protect them. So that's just where I'm coming from.
All right. Any other comments on the record from the Commissioners? Commissioner Sanderson?
Yeah, so there's been a lot of talk about services, too, supporting services. I think that's kind of a tough one, because it's kind of a chicken-and-egg scenario, whether you have the housing or the services to support the housing. So I feel like that one's kind of tough for me to make a decision on, but I do, I kind of tend to agree that we do need more rentals. I do think it needs to be closer to the core of the city. That's kind of my opinion. I think it would help bring back some of the commercial that we're kind of lacking. There's a lot of vacant commercial that we have in the core of the city, I think that would help with that. So I'm not super excited about it being on the south end of the town versus towards the core.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearings, and we'll look at item two. I would consider a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Banks?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the public hearing of zoning for Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms, RZ-01-20-7212.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Billups. This will be a roll-call vote, and I'll remind you, a yes vote is to deny.
Correct. Pleney Commissioner Cradoff?
Well, due to recent developmental complexities and studies underway of similar applications in this area, including some of the issues discussed here tonight, that maybe, that need to be further reviewed, I'm gonna have to vote yes in favor of turning it down.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Yes.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye.
It's denied. Recommendation for denial.
So that is, will be a recommendation of denial to go to the City Council on their March 2 meeting at 6:00 PM. Item three, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Graham? Chairman Graham?
Commissioner Banks?
Well, I'm making the motions. I would like to make a motion to deny the public hearing plan unit development, PUD concept plan. It's PUDC-01-20-7211 for Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms.
I have a motion for denial from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Commissioner Fairbanks. This will be a roll-call vote.
Pleney Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye.
So that failed as well, so we will be sending a recommendation of denial to the City Council, March 2 meeting at 6 o'clock. Item four on the preliminary plat. Do you want to continue, Commissioner Banks?
Yes, I will, okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny the preliminary plat for Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms, PP-01-20-7210.
I have a motion to deny from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Fairbanks. Again, I'm gonna do a roll-call vote on this.
Pleney Commissioner Billups?
Aye, because it's a vote to deny.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye.
So the preliminary plat will be denied by the Commission as well. That brings us to other business. Mr. Mallon?
Currently, we do not have anything scheduled for the March 9 Pleney Commission. We did have an application scheduled that evening for the Deer Creek Project that was continued multiple times to that date specific. The applicant informed us late last week that they have withdrawn that application, and so we will not be having a meeting on March 9. In addition, we did not get anything for the March 16 cutoff, so we may not have a meeting that night as well.
What? All right.
Can we...
Do we, do you need a motion on that, or...
Don't jump up. I know you want to make a lot of motions.
Well, if you want, go ahead.
Any other business?
You don't want a motion?
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Reading is adjourned.